That's what I sent them. I sent them all the same login, so they're logging in.
Reggie.
Under the agenda.
There's Reggie. And we are recording now and we are, attendees are showing up. There's Craig. I will move him to a panelist.
And did we hear from, did we hear from Tony?
Tony will be here. Yes. The only one that won't be here is Larry. Tony won't be here next month.
Oh, she won't be here September 2?
Mr. Chairman, I am going to ask the attendees to make sure that they rename themselves. So attendees, if you're listening, if you could, there are, usually you get a dot, dot, dot next to your name, or if you hover over your name, you can click a panel that says more, and you should be able to rename yourself, if you could list your first and last name properly. And I'm not picking on Patty or Peter M., but if you could let us know what the M. is, so that we have an accurate record of the meeting, I would appreciate it. Thank you. And we need Craig and Reggie to turn on their cameras.
I see the applicant for the first one, and I see the applicant for the second one.
Hang on just a little second.
Everybody else, I'm not sure.
Amina, you had a question?
Yes, you mentioned that we should be able to see the dot, dot, dot next to our name.
I've got your full name here, so that's a good thing. But you don't have a dot, dot, dot next to your name?
No, it's not the usual Zoom screen. The only things that we see are raise hand and Q and A. There's no chat, and we can't see who's in the room. So I'm wondering if we'll even be able to share our screen, because usually I see all those things at the bottom.
I won't promote you, and you will be able to share your screen. But when your item comes up.
Okay.
But right now, we are going to...
Because I...
I'm going to lower your hand.
Yeah.
And I'm going to mute you for the time being.
You can't see our faces?
No, I can't.
No.
Yeah, usually I see the little camera at the bottom. I see none of that.
When I promote you to a panelist, you will be able to, we will be able to see your faces.
Okay, alright.
But that's when your, when your agenda item comes up.
Okay, I just wanted to let you...
No problem.
...listen, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
There's Tony. We have quorum.
Yes, we do. Without further ado, I think we can proceed. Correct, Mr. May?
Correct, sir.
Alright, so you would like that same opening statement as part of this? I guess that's going to become part of every Zoom meeting?
Yes, yes, it will.
Alright, well, I have a prepared opening statement. I am calling this August 13, 2020, Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board to Order. My name is Bob Pelagi, and I am the Chair of the Board. This, this meeting is being recorded. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Novell Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, the August 13, 2020, public meeting of the Brockton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Board, Planning Board, utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or a question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. For those of you joining us by phone who want to ask a question, simply press star nine to raise your hand. A copy of the recording, the in-transcript, will be posted to the city's webpage within 72 hours. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure count accuracy. Quorum call, Board members, please respond in the affirmative to indicate your attendance at the meeting. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Present.
Larry Hassan, member Larry Hassan is not present this evening. Bob Pelagi is present. Alright, that takes care of our prepared statement. As far as tonight's agenda, again, this is a regular meeting of the Brockton Planning Board. This is August the 13th, 2020. The time is roughly 6:06 PM. Under housekeeping items, we've got acceptance of the minutes of the meetings of June the 16th, 2020, and June the 23rd, 2020. Administratively, we've got several items under endorsement of A and R plans, subdivision plans, and oil lot releases. We've got 11 Wilbur Avenue. That's a plan that needs plan endorsement. We've got lots 42 and 43 West Chestnut Street. That's the Meadow Woods definitive subdivision discussion and plan endorsement. Next is lot releases. We've got lot releases needed for 11 Wilbur Avenue, lots A and B. Also lot releases for 973 Crescent Street, lots 1 and 2. We have an air and a H2A in our plans, Petronelli Way and 380 North Montello Street. And we've got a return of surety for Briar Cliff Road. That's William Beers. I would like to take those, we'll get to the acceptance of the minutes. I'd like to take the, those administrative housekeeping items and move those to the end of the agenda, assuming that nobody has an objection to that. Hearing none, that's what we'll do. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of the meetings of June 16 and June 23, 2020? And have there any comments or concerns?
Motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Roll call. Okay, Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay, so let's get right to, let's see. We will get right to Agenda Item Number 1. This is a permission to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's property at 587 Center Street, Unit 7. Is there, just to give that a location, Pam or Rob, is that, do we know that is a commercial area? Is there a name to that commercial area? I know there's some major, the major vendors there is...
I don't know the actual name, but it is a strip center that is sideways on the property.
Yep, is that where Shaw's is? Or I know Grossman's is there?
It's where Grossman's...
Used to be.
Okay.
The Grossman's outlet.
Eastway Plaza.
Okay.
Eastway Plaza, okay. Would anybody who is a attendee who would like to speak on this, please click the Raise Your Hand button, so that I can promote you to a panelist, so that you can make your presentation and speak?
Yep, just to finish that, the zoning denial was January the 14th, 2020, and the applicant is Ruben Pierri. Thank you.
So Ruben, are you...
Are we ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to view this presentation. My name is Ruben Pierri, and I'm here with my fiancee, Amina, for this meeting. I am the owner of Sunrise Cuisine, which is currently located in the Assembly Square in Somerville. Sunrise is a family-owned business that's been in operation for the past 24 years. As a company and a hospitality business, we take pride in serving the community through takeout, dining, and catering. And we do catering for all sorts of events, for weddings, funerals, and so on. Sunrise is not only an established and successful restaurant, but a brand that expresses our values and mission to create an emotional connection with our guests. Due to that connection, our clientele has grown over the years, which has extended throughout Massachusetts. But in order to extend our services even further in this region, we wish to open a branch of our restaurant at the Eastway Plaza in Brockton. You may well be aware of that most memories and business ventures are made around food. This is why we want to place Sunrise in Brockton, to be that staple, to attract other minority-owned businesses to Brockton. And most of all, to make it a place where families can build fond memories and enjoy great food, high-end cuisine at a very affordable price. Furthermore, we feel that Sunrise will bring a new flair to the east side of Brockton that will not only re-energize, but revitalize the neighborhood. To make this possible, we are here today to ask for a special permit to build this fine Caribbean French cuisine restaurant at the Eastway Plaza. So in your packet, I have given you all the detail and specification of that plan, which include 100 seating and outdoor dining. So what I'm hoping is that, I hope to gain your approval for this exciting expansion. And now I pass on to Amina, who's going to further this presentation.
Thank you. As Ruben said, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to have this opportunity. Good evening to the members. It's great to see you. And I'm gonna just mute our camera for a moment to bring up our screen, and then I'll walk you through a brief presentation. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Alright. So this is a presentation that Ruben and I created to give you a visual of the vision for Sunrise in Brockton. And some of it is what you've already heard, but it's worth re-emphasizing. So who are we? As Ruben already mentioned, Sunrise seeks to offer fine dining in Brockton. And as far as the actual food goes, it will be a fusion of French and Caribbean flavors. And we believe that, you know, due to some research and due to my own living in Brockton and knowing the community, we're confident that it will blend traditions that already reflect Brockton's diverse heritage. As he mentioned, it'll be an investment in the east side. It will be a family and community establishment. Where just walking inside, you'll see that we celebrate the arts and the culture of the city. And then most of all, as we mentioned, the brand represents excellence, value, service, and significance. So the fact that Sunrise has been in business for 24 years, they just celebrated their 24th anniversary, demonstrates, you know, that they have had success in the region, both as a restaurant and as a catering business. And for me, you know, the east side is a place where there's been a legacy of this already. I mean, everyone who lives in Brockton, who has lived in Brockton for a while, might remember Crystals. And when I sort of, you know, talked to Ruben about this idea, I told him about Crystals, and I told him about the fact that the east side used to have something like this, and it would be great, you know, to bring it back. So the following slides that you're gonna see should already be familiar to you if you looked at your packet. If you didn't see them, what we did is we went back and we prepared all of the architectural designs to meet the exact specifications that were requested. So those are 24 by 36 designs. Unfortunately, with Zoom, obviously, we can't show you the physical presentation, but they are recreated here in the slides. And we have spoken to some folks in the neighborhood about this, and they're, you know, pleased. We don't have the actual letter here, but we do have the plans. This is the original plans that were submitted, which obviously were too small. And so now we have the actual revised plot plans with the detailed specifications for Unit 7. So I'm just gonna scroll through these, assuming that you've seen them. And again, you know, if you have seen them, you'll see that they show the exact measurements for tables, for seating, for each, each aspect of the unit once it would be done. This one is showing some details about the restrooms, and... Here you see that the restaurant will be wheelchair accessible. We have sent a separate petition for outdoor seating, as you know, and that's reflected on this particular image, as well as the kitchen and the entrance. This particular image has the gas connection detail, the grease trap detail for the kitchen, and the plumbing floor plan. More details about the kitchen, the commercial hood, etc.
Do you have the, those plans are... There's, could you, could you, could you enlarge that one there?
The parking?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if I can do that.
That's alright, that's alright. So the ones that you showed, the plan sets that you showed are, they're more than adequate. That, those are, those are, those are very significant plans that you've showed. In particular, you were denied, you were denied by the zoning board back in January. Were you, and Rod, you may be able to help out on this. Were you denied a variance or a special permit?
I believe it was the special permit, but it was mostly due to, because the plans were so small, so they weren't able to view them. So this is why we went back and made them, you know, the architectural size of 24 by 36.
And I'm not sure if Pam or Rob would be called, but yeah, essentially, they highlighted the fact that the original floor plan that was submitted did not even give them adequate information.
So, okay, because I was thinking, you know what, I reviewed that last week. So I wanna, I wanna be clear on what the issue of denial was. It wasn't, it wasn't because of lack of parking then?
No, they did, they had, they had questions about parking, and we had a letter from the property owner, but they said that it still wasn't enough. So they wanted to see this particular plot plan that's on the screen right now.
Okay.
To prove that...
I think, if I remember correctly, meeting, the issue was to make a decision. While I don't think anybody on the Board is against this, we just needed more information at the time to make, to make an informed decision. And this is definitely an improvement, a huge improvement over what was presented at the zoning board at the time.
Alright, but Craig, just to be very clear now, the issue was not, the issue of denial wasn't because of lack of parking?
No, not at all, not in, not in the least bit.
It was, it was apparently inferior, interior design? They didn't, at the time, it was designed?
Yeah, just a lack of information. And I, there was, it was just, we just needed more information. And I think by providing this information that we have tonight, I think that's, that's a vast improvement and a substantial change to their application.
Oh, it is, it is. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we addressed the reason for the denial, because that's the whole point of this hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, so that would appear as though if that's the, and again, I apologize. I did see your original, the zoning board's decision, but I didn't, I didn't print it out, so I'm afraid I didn't commit it to memory what the specific reason for the denial was. But if it was for lack of information of the interior design, it looks to me like you've certainly covered that base here.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, let's see, are there any...
There's just a couple more slides. If you have time, I'll just go through them.
Alright, just quickly, if you would like to, sure.
Yeah, so this is, they're just two sample images from 3D renderings. Again, just really modest samples. And then, thank you, thank you for your time and for allowing us to present. Well, I'll stop sharing now, and I'll turn our screen back on.
Alright, well, thank you. That was, that was a wonderful presentation. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Let's see, any, any comments on the part of the Board members, other than what we've just shared? Okay, well, this being a public hearing, is there anybody in...
No, I think this is an exciting project, and I'm happy to see the...
Yep.
Thank you.
This being a public hearing, is there anybody in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this return to the zoning board? Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in opposition to this petitioner returning to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Again, if those people could raise their hand, or hit the Raise Your Hand button if you'd like to speak. And I see none, Bob. Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, well, hearing that, I'll close that portion of the public hearing.
Make a motion to return to the zoning board for 587 Center Street?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, there's been, there's been a motion made in a second. Apparently, there's no further discussion that needs, that needs to be done made. So let's go to a roll call vote. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. So it looks like that, that has been confirmed. Good luck with that. You're, you'll be allowed to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and make your presentation again.
If I could just say one thing to Amina and Ruben, good luck with your, your restaurant. I work at South Shore Haitian Adote Health next door, so I think your restaurant will fit in perfectly to the community.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you all.
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Alright, so moving on to the second agenda item. The second agenda item is a definitive subdivision that was previously approved by the Planning Board on November the 8th, 2017. And the subdivision control law requires that an approved subdivision has to be recorded, what is it, nine months, I think, Rob? I forget. Is it nine months, within nine months of the agreement? And it wasn't. In any case, the plan was not, the plan was not recorded. So this previously approved plan is before us again. This is property Lot B, Charlotte Street. It looks like it's...
Rob, Michael Keith?
Map, map 156.
Would people who are here to...
Michael Keith. He's the applicant.
There he is. Move to... Michael, you are now promoted. Congratulations. You can turn on your video and your audio. Is there anyone else here to speak about this or present for this subdivision? Holly, I am going to move you into a panelist, but we're waiting for Michael to turn on his video and unmute his microphone, so he can make a presentation.
There you go.
There you are.
Sorry about that, I'm new to this.
And Holly, now you should be able to do the dot, dot, dot. And rename yourself. Pardon me. Mr. Chairman, the ball is yours.
Alright, thank you. Alright, well, this is a previously approved and expired definitive subdivision, which requires a rehearing, another, another, another public hearing, which this is. Again, this is property Lot B, Charlotte Street. It's a one, apparently one lot has to be, isn't it? Are there two lots?
There were two lots.
There's two lot subdivision, yeah. The owner representative is A American Investment. And your name, sir, please, could you state your name?
Michael Keith.
Michael Keith. Alright, Mr. Keith, could you just make a brief presentation as to...
Yeah.
What you're trying to do there?
Okay, what I'm here for tonight is to, to move forward with this project. This was approved in November of 17. And shortly after that, I had medical issues through the whole year of 18, which put this on the back burner. And since then, I've, you know, solved my medical issues, and now I wanted to move forward with this. And the time has ran out, so I just want to move forward with everything that was approved before, with all the same, with no changes.
Okay, just, and just for clarity, is this, was this a project that was previously granted a variance or something? Was this...
Yes, yes, yes.
About Pam, was that the case?
Yes, and he's going back before the zoning board also.
I did that already Tuesday.
You went Tuesday?
Tuesday, yeah, and it was all, and they all, it was all approved.
That was Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. So nothing, you're changing nothing, nothing has changed. Well, it seems straight, straightforward enough. It's an existing house, and then they cut off another building lot from that. Is that the case?
Exactly, yes. We had, there was a house that we purchased. We remodeled the house, split the lot up, and have sold the house since. And now the lot is, we're putting a new property on, a new house on that.
A new house, and you're gonna start that as soon as you get everything in order?
As soon as I get everything in order, correct.
Well, okay, thank you. Well, this being a public hearing, I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this definitive subdivision? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to correct the naming or editing. My name is Talik Rosette, and I'm resident at Number 10 Charlotte Street, which is the home right next to the lot. So I have two concerns, just for folks' consideration. My understanding that a condition of the home was also to have plans drawn and to redo the road, 10 Charlotte Street. If folks have never driven on Charlotte Street, right now, it's basically a dirt road, probably less than 10 feet wide. You know, we currently sort of share up and down the road and back out for our neighbors as needed. So there was a decision that, you know, there was gonna be some work to that road. And that was a condition. So I have, in looking at the plans for the road, there are two things that I wanted to, you know, again, bring to folks' consideration that are my concerns. Yeah, oh, thank you. So, right, the first one is gonna be the, the water drainage issue. So Charlotte Street is a hill. It goes up, and right now, it's a dirt road. So when it rains, you know, the city will come and regrade, but it, you know, creates these huge sort of, you know, divots and, you know, stream, you know, bedrock that's in there, and it runs right into Pinehurst. So the water gets slowed down by the dirt. It gets absorbed by the current dirt. And the wash-off runs into Pinehurst, which leaves the residents down below on Pinehurst. Actually, my neighbor, he shovels pretty frequently the dirt in front of his house from the runoff. So, um, I guess my concern is, if this road is paved, um, and there's no, there's actually, there's no, um, drainage or sewer at the bottom here either, where does that water go? What, what does that water do? Um, it's rolling down a hill on a smooth now surface, is it puddling, is it running off into, um, you know, the neighbors down here, is it flooding them? Um, so I, I don't, I don't know, uh, but I know what it does now, you know, with, with the dirt. Um, the, the second thing, um, is, um, in order to widen the road, I believe it's, uh, to 24 feet, leaving three feet on either side for a grassy, grassy area. Um, there are, um, many mature trees that are, create screening and sort of privacy, it's like a little island here with, um, many, many mature trees. Um, so, um, that run right up into the stockade fence on existing, so that other resident can't feed on this, but further up Pinehurst. Um, and so, you know, um, so my concern is the screening issue, um, the privacy issue, is there a way to, um, I don't know how many of those trees have to come down, you know, is there a way to salvage some of those mature trees? If not, is there a way to replace some trees? Um, without any trees there, it, yeah, it's, yeah, it sort of just runs into the stockade fence, and I don't know, this, my, my neighbor on the other side, uh, you can see the stockade fence up above.
All right, okay.
So, so thank you for listening.
All right, thank you very much, okay, I, I vaguely remember this project, I think, I think this, I remember this coming through the planning board, uh, Pam or Rob, uh, question, did, did Chike write any report or any, any critique on this, on this project?
Uh, not this time, because the, and I, and I believe he's only doing a small section of roadway.
Well, this, this show, well, this, this, uh, and I think it's a more complicated than that, this, this plan shows, you can see the existing proposed contours, and so it's obviously showing an improved road all the way to the end. Uh, I, it, it shifted off center, and I think my memory is a little vague on it, but I think it shifted off center. The proposed paving has shifted off center to accommodate the trees that the lady was talking about, I think that's the reason why. But, but, but she raises a good question as to what happens to that sheet flow, you've got 24 feet by whatever the length of that street is, it, it, and it's, 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 it's un, unintenuated flow from, from the end all the way down to Pinehurst Avenue, so she raises a good question. I, I don't remember, I don't recall what was done, I mean, I can't, I can't imagine that Chike initially didn't, wasn't involved with this where it was filed as a subdivision. So, I think, I think, I think it needs a, maybe it's just a matter of housekeeping, we need to get a hold of Chike, but I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed, that's a lot of water.
And this is Holly's house.
Yes, it is.
And you, you have this drop of, uh, from 173 to 170.
Right now, right now, that Charlotte Street is just an unimproved street, it's just a dirt road?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I mean, that's, that, you're creating a lot of runoff there. Again, I.
Is there a storm drain on Pinehurst?
But I don't have the whole history of this thing in front of me, and that would have helped if I did, but I don't, so I'm just saying that my memory recall isn't what it used to be, but you're, you're creating a substantial amount of runoff there.
This was. Hello?
You can see the curb and right here. You've got curb all the way around, Bob.
Yes, but where's, where is the runoff going, you've got, you've got an elevation at the top there of, uh, what is it, 1, 160, it's probably, probably 168, 169, and then you, it's, you got about, it looks like about a 10-foot drop there from the length of the.
To 167, yeah.
So where is that, that's a fair amount of runoff, when you, when you look at the difference in the, i- i- in the surfaces, you've got a gravel road that's, a small gravel road that's gonna be now an improved paved road, that's, that's, that's a fairly significant amount of sheet flow. Can you slide the plan so that we can see the, the Pinehurst end?
Um, uh, yeah, just one second, though, I wanna see if I have another, um, drawing that has the. No, I don't, I just have that, I don't have the, um, uh, but I'll shift the drawing.
Mr. Keith, could I, uh, Mr. Keith, have you talked to DPW about tying into a storm drain on Pinehurst?
I have no idea.
If there is a storm drain?
This was addressed with, uh, when we first came there, and we had to, uh, Pillings, Bruce Pillings had met with, uh, Chike, and they did a new plan on how the water was gonna drain off, he originally wanted a 20-foot road, and they wanted him to go to a 24-foot road, because that was some of his concern, because it was so wide with runoff. And he went before him and changed the plan, and I do have a letter from Chike, there's a whole, uh, bunch of stuff here from the, with, uh, Pillings and Chike had talked about, about, uh, and change, and they changed it, and he said that, and in the letter here, that he's satisfied with the new plan, the way that we had, uh, did it, I guess, from what Bruce Pillings said is, at the bottom of Pioneer to the right, there's a drain, water would come down and drain off on the right side of Pinehurst.
Somewhere down here?
Yes.
Well, you're not, you're not showing one.
I know, I don't, that's what he, but he actually went out there and did it, but this was, this letter, we, we went before him with a plan, and he, he wasn't happy with it, and he redrawn the plan and showed more, and had meetings with him, and since then, we have a letter saying that he was okay with the way we had, the way that Bruce had, uh, laid it out.
It's unfortunate that it doesn't show in the plan, and I, I, um.
Yeah.
It's, it's, um.
Can I ask, if the water doesn't do that now, what would, what would make it do it in the future, the water doesn't direct, I know the drain, it's in, it's in front of the Inokian House, um, so plot 156, um, the, the property, the Inokian property, it's, um, sort of like in, over here, well, you can't see my arrow, but, um, but it, it goes, you know, it goes to the right. Um, and this is all like a flat, there's no incline to Pinehurst, so I'm just curious, um, if anybody knows how, like, how that would do that, it doesn't do that now, it just runs straight down. Um, you know, into the street and into the neighbors here on Pinehurst, the, the four, I believe. And there's no break here as well for the current on, on, so Pinehurst Street is not really developed either, right, so there's, there's nothing breaking, you know, the water now in the front, um, and there's no drain.
It was 57, yeah.
Michael, date on the letter from Chike.
Excuse me?
The date on the letter from Chike.
Um, April 30th, 2000, I'm, I'm sorry, August 30th, 2017.
What's the date on the plan?
Uh.
The revision date on the plan?
September 14th, 2017.
September 14th, 2017? Is that the new plan, I don't know if that's the new plan.
So this plan is af, this plan is a result of?
Ever meeting with Chike, yes, but I believe if you look at the, if you look at the, uh, yeah, you got 157 at the bottom, and then on Pinehurst is 153, so the road does go downhill towards that drain.
Right, what drain, what, what is the, I mean, I don't mean to persist with this, but I, I can't tell me what the drainage solution is, I, I don't.
There is, there is a, there is a storm drain, by, by, by visually going out there, I went up.
Okay, I, I have pulled up Google Maps, um, have to say that I keep.
It's, it is right in front of the.
On Pinehurst.
Well.
The Pinehurst does not have turbine.
Maybe, I mean, then maybe, it looks like by the dash line there, Pinehurst is a somewhat, I'm, it's all, because there's no notes on the plan, and there's no details on the plan, I don't know even if Pinehurst is an improved, is it paved?
Yes.
Okay, all right, because it looks like it's the, it doesn't label it, but it looks like there's paving there, but, I mean, it's possible, it's possible, Mr. Keith, that you've got, that you've got a, a drainage solution, but if you don't.
Yeah, there is, that's, I think that's the reason why he had to go back and have a meeting with Chike because of the drainage, and that's when they went back, sat down, and, and, and I had talked to Bruce today, and he sent me the, the letter from them and all the, uh, conversations that they had.
Okay, and it's entirely.
Bruce said that you guys should have this in the file, the same, the same stuff.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, because we're doing things remotely here, that may be, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that we don't have it, but in, in, it's likely that there may have been a drainage solution proposed, discussed, and approved, but.
Yes.
I, I don't see it.
That was one of the, that was one of the obstructions when we first went, went there, that the plan wasn't substantial enough and all that, and so we, so that, we had, we had come back, and after we had several meetings, I guess, with, uh, the engineer over there, and got the letter, and then came back to get approval.
So that, so that, that correspondence from Chike, did you submit that with this application?
I did not, I didn't know I needed, I didn't know I needed to, but the, the concerns were raised at the zoning meeting by Holly about that, and, uh, they said they would address it, so I, I since talked to, uh, Pillings, and he, Pillings, uh, Bruce Pillings had sent me all this.
Okay, I think that's.
So I have, yeah, I can send it to you, but he said that you guys should also have that in your, in the meeting.
Well, I think, myself personally, I think it's important enough that we get it right, I think it's important enough that we have an answer to the drainage question, I can't tell me what it is.
I think it was addressed, and it was, and that, the concern, yeah.
It's all documented as you say it is.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if this thing has to hold to the September 4th, whatever it is, meeting, I, I don't think that's the end of the world, I think it's an important enough issue that, that I think that's the proper way to do it. Uh, you've got questions of the trees, I think, my memory now is that that was addressed, that was discussed at the meeting, and I think that's the reason why the proposed paving was offset on the, what is, what's the name of the new road, Wilbur?
Uh, no, uh, Charlotte Street, you're talking about?
Charlotte, 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 anyway.
Some of the confusion was, uh, when she saw, when, uh, Holly saw the plan the other day, uh, the three foot, there's a, the three foot of vegetation on the right side going up Pinehurst, and there's, I believe, nine feet on our side where her house is, and I, so their vegetation will stay, and she had mentioned something about a telephone pole, the telephone pole staying in this position, the trees that will be removed are on the left side of the road going up, uh, Charlotte.
No, on the right side going up Charlotte?
Going up. Trees that are removed are on the right side, correct?
Right, right, they're on the right side going up Charlotte.
Nothing will be touched on, uh, the left side of your side, is, that's staying pretty much the way it is, he pushed that over the other side, so nothing would get touched, and I think one of Bruce's.
Isn't that the reason why he offset the paving, so that it's not concentric with the, with the, with the right away?
Correct, and he, and he really wanted to do a 20-foot roadway too, to save some of that, and, and they wanted to go with a 24, so we, we.
I think the reason, I think it was fire that actually wanted to increase the.
Yeah, it wanted to go, yeah, but.
Then they're not gonna approve a 24-foot, well, my personal, well, first of all, um, okay, so you, is that pretty much the presentation?
Yeah, that's pretty much it, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's, did we, how far did we get with, uh, input from the public, we have, uh, we asked for people in, in, in favor, and then we have one person speaking in opposition, Rob, is there anybody else speaking in opposition?
Uh, if anybody else would like to speak, please click the raise your hand button, and, uh, I will promote you to a panelist so you can talk.
Okay.
Uh, I have someone, hang on just a second, please.
All right.
And I think this is, uh, P. Lynch. Uh, could you identify yourself, please, for the record? P. Lynch, if you have some comment, if you would identify yourself for the record.
There we go. Sorry about that, um, I didn't have the mic on, um, while you were talking, I did go on Google Earth, and you can go down to street view, and Pinehurst is a paved street. Um, granted, it probably needs to be repaved, but that's a whole separate thing. Um, and there is a sewer drain in the middle, so I just wanted to kind of add that, um, where people were looking at it, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any comments on, from the board?
Um, one of the things I'd, I'd like to see, uh, I mean, the, the road comes right up to the edge of the, uh, for Chet property, uh, up, up on, uh, 156, uh, actually, yeah, plot 7, uh, of, is there a way to screening along the side, is, just like, just like you're preserving trees on your side, is there a way to preserve any screening on, on the other side, or at least plant something?
So, can you preserve?
On the opposite side? Uh, there's three foot, I mean, I, this, I, I believe he said there's a three foot of area left over there between the, uh, fence line and, uh, the road, so that we're gonna put a grassy area there. If we shorten the road to a 20-foot road, we could, there'd be plenty of room to put trees.
So it's just, it's just a matter of, there, there is no space there.
Exactly, for, to go to 24, I think Bruce was trying to get some trees and leave some trees in there at the 20-foot line, but with the 24, in the 212.
He, he wanted to do that, that was part of his initial proposal, but I think, I'm almost positive that it was the fire department's input that said that 20-foot is not adequate. So I think that's, I think that's how you got to where you got, and let's face it, Charlotte Street is a, I mean, it's a way, it's a, it's a recorded way, so, uh, if, there's, there's gonna be minimal tree loss, but there's gonna be some tree loss, and I believe that was the reason for shifting, again, shifting Charlotte Street off, off center.
I know.
It shifted off center, Mr. Chair, because you have utility poles and a, uh, stone retaining wall on the, uh,
That's right, too, that they wanted to maintain.
West side of the property that, that, uh, they're trying to avoid.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah, that is true.
Right in there.
That's my, that's in front of my house, correct.
All right, well, I, myself personally, I think that, um, I mean, the next meeting isn't that far away, these, these, these unaddressed items, I, there's a good chance that they've been addressed, I can't imagine that Chike would, uh, not address them, but unfortunately, we don't, I don't have, we don't have the information that we need tonight, uh, to make that decision, um, I think we can get them on the next agenda, and I think that's enough time window to get copies of, uh, Chike's, Chike's the city engineer, to get his review comments, and if he's satisfied with whatever the drainage solution is or was, because I can't imagine that there, that there isn't one, then that will suffice, so my, my recommendation is that, we don't be laboring this thing, is that we continue it to the next meeting.
Well, if I, is there a way I can email this, what Bruce had emailed to me, to you guys, to look at before this meeting is over, you can see what he, what he sent over to me?
You, I mean, if you want to send that along, I mean, that's also on record, we can get that, if you'd like to send it along, but I, I don't think, I don't think it's, but my point is, sir, that I, I don't think we're in a position to endorse or approve the plan unless those questions are answered. I think it's a, it's a high likelihood that it was already previously answered, I'd just like.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, and then, just for the record.
And I don't see it.
Just for, just for the record, while I was working on 20 Charlotte Street there, you know, when I was up there remodeling that, I was there for several months, I, I actually took care of that road several times myself, because the road had horrible potholes, I mean, it's a dirt road, it made a mess at the end of the street. Um, so, I mean, it's constantly having to be fixed, and I, I think this, this be an improvement for the neighborhood, especially Holly, and so we'll have a nice paved road.
Oh, I, I, I agree. I, I, I agree. I just want this done right. I understand that, you know, you want to build a house there, but I live there. You know, you know, we all live there and, you know, when you're gone, you still have to live there without trees and, you know, potentially a water issue. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this is, it's, you know, I, I'm doing my due diligence. I have to.
Yeah, I understand.
Want to make sure it's addressed. So would you, without belaboring this any, any longer, is there any other comments from the other board members? Okay, I, I just, I think these things, it seems to me that these things are easily addressed. I can't imagine that we got that far without addressing something as basic as drainage. I don't think so. But if we can, if you can present that information to the planning department, the, the, that, the letter from the city engineer and what, what other else supportive information that Mr. Pillings might have provided you, that would be great. And we'll put you on, I think, Pam, am I speaking correctly? Pam and Rob, can we get the gentleman on the next meeting?
Definitely.
Okay, so I think we can, I mean, I think we can take care of this next meeting if you can get us that information. It's pretty important, so.
Meeting is about two pages long right now.
Yeah.
Can we email you, Pam?
You can email to the office, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah. But yes, I will put him on and move him somewhere.
These same questions were a concern. That's why we had to meet, meet with GK and I'm reading the letter saying that he's looked at the plan.
And you can understand, you can understand, sir, I hope that we want to get, we want to get it right.
I was just saying her concerns that she had a full meeting next month, next week.
No, that's, I appreciate that. Yeah, if you can get that information, if it's that straightforward and we have that information ahead of the meeting, if it's a straightforward, it's been addressed as you're suggesting that it is, we'll take care of it. It'll be, it can be moved through fairly quickly. So can I get a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Motion been made and seconded. Roll call. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. All right, thank you, sir. We'll, we'll.
Wednesday, September 2nd.
Wednesday, September 2nd?
Yep.
Okay, you'll send, you'll email me, email me, email me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you'll get another Zoom invite.
Okay, I will send this over to you as soon as I get off and you'll have this in your office tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. All right, the second agenda, I mean, the, let's see, the third agenda item is, again, is the, it's a definitive subdivision property is at map 37, plots 4, 6 and 18, Augusta Avenue. In plot 36, Prospect Street, that's Frederick Hepshe is the applicant. This thing's been hanging around a while. Uh, that's Crowley Hanson is the representative. It's an 18 lot subdivision. That's been rescheduled to September the 2nd. And just for clarity, Pam, why does this continue to get re-scheduled?
There had, there was supposed to be a neighborhood meeting, which was never held because of COVID. Bill Self has been trying to put something together. The applicant, the owner of the property has been in the office the last two weeks. He is insisting that we move forward at the next meeting, so gonna move forward. Unfortunately, the plans you have are not the most updated plans.
And why is that? Why is that, Pam?
Because they've never been changed. So be, pending the outcome of whatever meetings they had and the sign off by engineering, none of that has happened. And so you're only going to be able to look at what's before you.
Okay, so we'll open and continue. I mean, we can, we can only address what we've got.
Right, I told him that and he just, he just wants you to vote, so.
Okay, all right. And then, so we move to agenda item number four. It's another definitive subdivision property on Tubal Gravie Avenue. Lot residential subdivision. This, this has been repeating, not as many times. And why is this one continuing?
Um, that is having issues with the conservation commission. There have been several, um, land changes, updates. Um, there is a latest one and it's either going to be a yes or a no at this point. It's scheduled for conservation next week.
You're saying a yes or no with CONCON?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, and then the fifth agenda item again is a, is a definitive subdivision property at 678 East Street. There's a two lot subdivision. This is the one that, um, we had the, um, the neighborhood meeting at the Davis, was it the Davis? I think it was the Davis.
Yes, sir, it is.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that was Benjamin.
He's also submitting some revised plans. I haven't received these either, so.
Okay, that rounds that out. All right, and then, uh, that's on for September the 2nd as well. Okay, so, um, I guess we'll move to the, um, we'll move to the housekeeping items, the, there's administrative items there. Let's see, 11 Wilbur Avenue is a planned endorsement. A little quick background on that one, please, Pam?
Um, Wilbur Ave was, uh, just a split of a, a lot, an existing home.
Okay.
With a newly created lot, um, just caught up in the whole COVID thing.
All right, was it, was that a ZBA item?
It was a, it was a ZBA. Um, everything's in line. The problem was the appeal period hadn't passed because everything was frozen. So Tony has now, Tony Z always now signed off on the plan.
Was that, was that just, was that a definitive subdivision?
It was, yeah. Um, also.
For the board members, when can the board members come in and sign it?
Next week?
Starting Monday.
Starting Monday, if you can just come in.
Okay. So that's all you need on that one?
Yeah, but I'd also like if you would vote to release the two lots pending the, um, recording of the plan. The work has already been done. The letter is already in your file. You put all the utilities in already.
All right.
So DPW has already signed off. There's no need of any surety anymore.
So this is for 11 Wilbur?
Yes.
Yes.
Two lot, two lot subdivision, lots A and B. So everything is on, the surety is, the surety is in order?
Motion to release that A and B of 11 Wilbur Ave?
The surety is a covenant. How, in the, during this whole COVID period, he has already had the work done in the road.
Okay, he's just looking for.
Already signed off on all the work.
All right. Well, if you're satisfied with these, and you said DPW Larry has signed off on.
Yep, there's a letter in your file.
Very good. Well, let's, let's move on then.
There, there is a motion on the floor.
I second the, I second it.
Okay, I didn't hear the, either motion, but there's been a motion made and seconded. Roll call. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes, so those funds will be released. Then the other, might as well do, might as well keep that, uh, let's see, the other lot release, uh, is 973 Crescent Street. That's a two lot subdivision. What's the background on that one, Pam?
Wait a minute, where are you? I just lost you.
He's jumped.
Because you split them, you split them. Back to Chestnut Woods, but, uh, I'm, right now, I'm just.
Crescent Street, okay. Um, I'm holding the cash for Crescent. Um, he placed a $30,000 check.
Okay.
So that covers his work in the street and, um, a 20% contingency.
Okay, that covers, yeah, that, so that covers the 20% of the necessary work to be done, the uncompleted work.
Yes, so.
All right.
Is it complete?
Work hasn't been done. He gave us the cash.
Yeah, we're holding, we're holding cash.
We're holding the cash instead.
So you're okay with us?
Release.
Yes. Once he places the cash, you have to.
Okay, so I make a motion to, for the lot release of 11 Wilbur Ave, 973 Crescent Street, lots one and two.
I'll second my motion.
Okay, we have, we have a, uh, a motion made and seconded of the lot release, 973 Crescent Street, two lots. Roll call. Craig Peanut? Craig?
You froze him.
Yeah, frozen.
Oh, I just heard a yes. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes, so those are done. Let's see, that's what keep going. We'll come back to what's Chestnut Street then. Uh, the next item is A and R. We have two A and R plans that need to be endorsed in Petronelli Way. Uh, and that, and then 380 North Montello Street. Petronelli Way has got to be work having to do with, uh, Trinity, I'm sure Trinity, uh.
That's the new road.
The Trinity, Trinity project, right?
Yes, it is.
All right.
There it is.
So can we come in, can the members come in at the beginning of the week and sign it? Can we make it all in one trip, Pam?
You can. Everything will be ready on Monday.
Okay. And then what's a quick, this is, okay, there you go. There's the new, there's the, the new roads, okay. Nicely done. Is that just, is that the same engineer that's doing the work on Trinity?
Uh, no, sir, it's a different engineer.
All right. And then what's the background on 380 North Montello Street?
Yeah, wait a minute. I have to hang on a second. My mind is not functioning.
Oh, Pam.
And well, usually I'm real good at remembering addresses. I just need to pull up the.
Well, we like to put you on the spot if we can.
I know. This is 390 North Montello, 380. I'm gonna have to go to the file. All right, wait a minute. Can we come back to that one?
Hold it, I'm almost there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
390.
It says 380 North Montello.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
An A and R sounds like it's a lot division, right?
It is.
Um, hang on, let me share screen.
Look at that. Okay, so this is a three lot subdivision, it looks like to me.
Oh, that's, okay.
Oh, now we.
Now I remember.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
That's the one. East Ashland, North Montello.
He's creating three commercial lots.
North Montello, I can't even picture that. East Ashland.
There has been a, um, a power connection pole up on this corner for a million and a half years.
Yeah.
Um, and look at this line that he's creating here. That's ugly, it's, uh, heck.
That what? Mr. May, say that again?
It is ugly, but.
I know. What, well, what zoning?
This is a C2 zoning district.
Well, he didn't, apparently he didn't need any relief from zoning then, right?
He does not.
Which is why he, which is why this is an A and R. But a dollar says this will come back as two residential house lots. This is a residential unit right now.
Well, there'll be some zoning there then.
But it, but it is an A and R, so.
Is that the lot that's currently, uh, the RIN law office?
Yeah, isn't that, isn't that with?
The law building is right here.
Okay. Wasn't there an oil, wasn't there an oil retailer there historically? I bet, I think there was.
Yeah.
There is, yeah.
I know, okay, I know where you are now.
Yeah.
All right, so.
It's right in front of the old Tip Top.
What?
It's right in front of the old Tip Top Cafe.
Yeah, across the street from the Tip Top.
Okay. All right, well, the plan appears to be in order, so there's no reason to not endorse that. We, that, that'll be within the group of plans for Monday?
Correct.
Wonderful. Okay, then, then the next item is return of surety. This is Briar Cliff Road. Uh, William Beers was before us looking for relief on a bunch of things on, on the end of Briar Cliff Road there, uh, one of which was the, and we did grant relief on a number of items, but he wanted to, that was the one where he wanted to eliminate the sidewalk around the cul-de-sac and that's the one area, that's the one.
Put the gray curbs on the cul-de-sac.
That we did, that we did not grant. So he, he was, he finished the sidewalk. It looks great. I've been up there a couple of times, not for that reason, but I happened to notice that he did it. It looked, it looked good to me, so. And then, Pam, you said that Larry, uh, that DPW was signed off on it?
I have, I have, uh, an as-built that was uploaded to your files and the letter from the DPW, um, signing off on the work. And Mr. Beers is here, listening.
We need a motion to return the surety?
We do, yes.
Motion to return the surety?
I second, second that.
Right, uh, okay, roll call vote. Been a motion made and seconded to return the surety for Briar Cliff Road. Craig Peanut?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes.
Okay.
Great.
And that leaves you with Meadow Woods.
Okay, the last item is Meadow Woods. It's block 42 and 43, West Chestnut Street. Meadow Woods is a definitive subdivision. And that's where discussion.
Special adjourn?
Plan it, plan endorsement, plan endorsement. And, um, as I, as I had mentioned to or indicated, I will step away from that because I was not previously involved in any, in any portion of the prior action, so.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may.
Yes.
In, in working, um, or reviewing this information, there are a couple of things that, that stick out, um, that we should, um, take into consideration. And I just closed my notes. There they are, um. And, uh, the first is that, um, the, uh, board voted that Patricia's path would only be, um, 100 and, uh, 700 feet deep. And right now, um, it, the, the cul-de-sac stops at 100, 700 feet. Um, but there is this, the stigial tail that's indicated here in blue on this plan that, um, was part of a site plan approval, but not part of a subdivision approval. So, um, uh, and I'll go on in, in just a second about that. But right now, you have your, your, uh, cul-de-sac here, um, highlighted in orange. And I don't think, uh, let me see. I have to turn on my annotating tool. You can see this orange line here. That is the turnaround. That, if he's building it to city standards, which he had agreed to do, means that there is a six foot, or six inch curb, um, that there is appropriate drainage and, um, that there is the sidewalk that continues around. You can see the sidewalk comes and sort of cuts through the cut through, uh, cuts through the turnaround. But the sidewalk should actually come all the way around the cul-de-sac and, uh, connect to the other side. So that point is, is missing. Um, another issue that we have is that there, he shows a easement here, uh, where the street, uh, Patricia's path intersects with, uh, West Chest. where the street, Patricia's path intersects with West Chestnut, but he does not show, he doesn't have a easement document. So having, as, as we know, having a drawing that says easement and having an actual signed legal document are two different things. Now, if I could just get back to the stigial tail for just a second, I'm going to stop annotating. And see if I can move up. You should be able to see three colored blocks. Are we all seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
By the way, did we, excuse me, Mr. May, did we lose Mr. Pena?
He's here. He's here.
Okay, thank you, I didn't see him on the screen, thank you.
Um, so you have the road coming through, this is the new right-of-way. In the drawing that he is, uh, the applicant has submitted to us, the right-of-way continues all the way to the West Bridgewater line. And under our regulations, the right-of-way actually has to stop for a. A dead-end street has to stop. At 700 feet unless he has a waiver, he did not request a waiver at this point. So if he wants to continue access to his West Bridgewater property, that is not a problem, but he has to show that this is no longer right-of-way, so this land in the middle, the stigial tail either needs to belong to Lot 2 or to Lot 3, or as I've drawn a combination thereup. So I'm asking you as a board to say, thank you, but. You need to take this plan back to. Your architect or your engineer, excuse me, and have it redrawn.
Makes sense.
So I'll leave that, leave that to the board. If they will choose to discuss any further.
Why does this plan change so much? We keep changing back and forth every, every time I see this.
Well, if you remember, the old right-of-way, or the old turnaround was back here, at about 800 feet. And voters voted in their amended subdivision approval to require that the, the right-of-way stop at, at 700 feet, which is this line here. Oops, excuse me, I stopped annotating. Which is this line here, so this, this section here in blue, that's the stigial tail, should not be indicated as right-of-way.
Okay, so he needs to, he needs to have the plans redone.
Yeah, it's, it's something simple, and, and when he. Easily could have this done by the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to stop sharing so that. I can see my computer screen. All right. And then. If, if that is the will of the board, I will convey that information to the applicant.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
And lastly, do we have any other business, Pam? I think this is all of it.
We do not. Excellent.
Motion to adjourn?
I second that.
All right, there's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn, and that does not require a vote.
Yeah, and, and for the attendees who are also on here, I see people are flicking their hands, raising their hands. I just want to remind them that this is not a public hearing and that the, the board is no longer taking testimony. If you have questions, please submit them to the planning department at planning@cobma.us. That's planning@cobma.us. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening, all.
Same to you. Guys, take care.
Thank you.
Bye.